The items that we'll be discussing this evening on the docket will be handicap parking spot approvals for vote, the resolution authorizing the mayor to pay invoices for the pre-construction expenses for the new East Providence High School, and an appointment that we have as well. And then in addition to that, we'll have public hearing for the Bristol County Water Authority presentation towards the latter part of the meeting here. So what I'll further do, I'll just ask that the Madam Clerk take a roll call vote for this evening.
Councilman Cahoon? Councilman Cahoon will join us a little bit later. Councilman Murato?
Yeah.
Council Vice President Rodriks?
Here.
Councilwoman Souza?
Here.
And Council President Berto?
Here. Thank you. Before we start this evening, can we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item, please.
Handicap parking spot approvals for vote, Councilwoman Souza Eduardo Papola?
Yep.
And Maria Jose Maderas.
So this is on the docket for two constituents in the ward two who need access, handicap access in front of their property for vehicles, for pickups for emergency vehicles, for appointments and such. I just want to make this contingent on having all the information present to the DPW director prior to facilitating or erecting the signs at the properties listed. So I make a motion to approve A, Eduardo Papalianos.
Mr. President? Yes. Second. Okay, so we have a motion to approve the handicap parking spot, seconded by Councilman Rodriks. Roll call vote, please. Madam Clerk?
Councilman Murato?
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodriks?
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza?
Aye.
And Council President Berto?
Aye.
Next item, please.
Resolution authorizing the mayor to pay invoices for pre-construction expenses for the new East Providence High School. For the vote, Councilman Cahoon.
We're gonna hold... Excuse me. We're gonna go to the next one as well?
I'm gonna hold on that for Councilman Cahoon.
Okay.
Okay. The next is appointment for the vote, Assistant Harbor Master Pump Operator Greg Patello, 24 Winslow Street, 02915. Councilman Murato?
The Harbor Master has requested that Mr. Patello get appointed to the Assistant Harbor Master's position. He's been checked out and verified and has all the qualifications needed.
Mr. President, there are no other questions. I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay. We have a motion to approve the appointment for Assistant Harbor Master Pump Operator. Would anyone like to second that motion?
I'll second that.
And we have a second by Councilwoman Souza. Madam Clerk, may we have a roll call vote on this?
Yes. Councilman Murato?
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodriks?
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza?
Aye.
And Council President Berto?
Aye.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Public hearing Bristol County Water Authority presentation and discussion regarding proposed interconnection routes and options.
Mayor, would you like to approach the podium and make the introduction, please?
Thank you, Council President and members of the council. Today, we have a group of people who are very knowledgeable in our water system. And it's kind of, the way things happen, sometimes it almost makes you question how these situations arise. It's almost like if it was planned. So a few weeks ago, we had a presentation by the Bristol County Water Authority to the members of the council regarding a proposed connection as a secondary source of water to our water supply tank in Kent Heights. And the reason we need that is that we, as a community in East Providence, should we have a problem with the water that's coming in from the province water supply to our water tank? Should that water supply system fail, we'd have to rely on a connection to Bristol County that would not be sufficient to provide water to all of our community and all of our residents. So they came over, they made a proposal, and after making that presentation to the council, they then had a very serious issue that they're still dealing with when a leak on their water supply line sprung. So they're currently dealing with that situation, and we had to test our connection to Bristol County Water to ensure that they would be able to tap into us should they have to shut down their water supply, and that may be something they have to do later on. But a lot of work and effort has gone into coming up with a couple of different options of how to connect from Bristol County to our tank at Kent Heights. And the administration has sat down with Bristol County, and out of the two options, we feel that option two will be the least disruptive. They will present both options today so the council and the public has a chance to see them. But option two, from the presentation made, would be the least disruptive to our community, least disruptive to traffic, and the most cost-efficient. So with that being said, we have our Director of Water, Jim Marvel, here, and our DPW Director, Steve Kudo, to answer any questions. But before they do, I'd like to call up the Director of the Bristol County Water Authority, Pam Marshon, to give more details.
Thank you, Ms. Marsh. Good evening. As I mentioned last time, this process started quite a few years ago. I was a member of the State Water Resource Board, and one of their primary plans was to provide a backup supply to the East Bay. That's for East Providence and Bristol County water. We are both served by pipelines that run underneath the river, the Providence River, which can be vulnerable to problems, as we have found out. Back in 2012, the Water Resource Board and the City of East Providence started a study on bringing a pipeline to Pawtucket for a secondary source of supply. I also came to Bristol County Water in 2012 and said, "Well, wait a minute. Our supply from Providence isn't that far from the East Providence storage tank, so it would make sense to build a pipeline between the two systems so we would have a redundant supply from Providence that both East Providence could use and Bristol County could also use." Since that time, I did find records that that was part of the original plan for building the pipeline. There was a 24-inch pipe that was supposed to connect the two systems, that would then provide adequate water for either system in an emergency. Since that time, we have had an emergency, we have a leak on our side of the pipeline, on the Providence River side, and we may need to use some East Providence water if we need to shut that main down. We have yet to locate the leak. Hopefully, that will be within the next week, and we have a supply that's an emergency connection with East Providence where we can get just enough water to supply our system, not adequate on a continuous basis for a long period of time. So what we're presenting tonight is what we're calling Phase One of building this interconnection to Pawtucket. This actually connection is just that 24-inch main that we're looking to connect the two systems together. And we'll provide enough water, in that case also for East Providence, to take water from our pipeline and for us to take water from the East Providence pipeline. So without getting into any details, we have our engineers here, Beta Engineer and Paul Smith, will take you through the presentation.
Thank you, City Council. If at any time you have a question, you can interrupt me and ask your question. We'll wait to the end, whatever you prefer. All right. Project background. As Pam alluded to, both the City of East Providence and Bristol County Water Authority received their water, 100% of their water, from the City of Providence. East Providence disappears on the television. I apologize, the pointer disappears. But the red line to the north is East Providence's connection to the City of Providence water supply. It's two 32-inch pipes. Those were installed circa 1967. Those pipes are sitting on the bottom of the river. Bristol County Water Authority's pipe is newer construction, 24-inch steel pipe, shown to the south over in the Fields Point region, the red line crossing the river, heading over towards Pawtucket Ave. There's a dashed light blue line that's interconnecting the two water supplies. That's the existing 16-inch interconnection that currently links the two water systems. That's a distribution system interconnection, so it's long-term. It's not providing the type of water supply that you would need to rely on it in a long-term basis.
Excuse me, and that's the line that was recently used for that leak?
The active leak is right where Fields Point is, that parking lot over near Roger Williams. That's why it is ongoing.
Excuse me, can you speak into the mic so we audience at home can hear exactly what you're saying? Thank you.
Over at Fields Point in the parking lot, there is an active, ongoing leak that we're evaluating currently.
16-inch, right? The one that's there now, that's what was used to...
The 16-inch right now is the only interconnection between the two water systems.
Thank you.
So that's why redundancy is important here. If there's a large water main break in Providence, which would cut off the supply to both East Providence and Bristol County Water Authority, that's one type of failure that could happen that could impact both water systems. The other type of failure would be the cross-bay pipeline pipes. Something happened to them, either within the bay or on the Providence side. I know East Providence's connection goes back about five miles to Cranston, so there's a long length of pipeline that something could happen to. Based on the location of these pipelines, any problem, especially within the bay or close to the bay, we're talking about an extremely difficult repair to complete, sort of what we're dealing with currently for Bristol County Water Authority.
Excuse me, sir. With the existing two pipelines that are there at this point in time, from Providence over to East Providence, what will happen to those lines?
Under our project?
Yeah.
Nothing proposed to happen under this project for that. Essentially, this Phase One project is to establish a larger diameter interconnection from the Silver Springs Golf Course location, where Bristol County's pipe cuts across the golf course in the easterly direction, and then heads to the south to the Bristol County Water Authority communities. The goal of the project would be to tap into that pipe there and route it to the Kent Heights water tank to establish a larger diameter interconnection. Once that's established, it's beneficial for both communities because it allows, for one, in an emergency-type situation we're dealing with now, it ensures that either community will have sufficient water long-term, which will allow for potential inspection of East Providence's pipes or Bristol County's pipes. Take them offline and inspect them. The inspection could reveal that the pipes warrant rehabilitation. This interconnection would be crucial to allowing you to move forward with that endeavor, the inspection and possible rehabilitation if it would be deemed warranted. But most importantly, it ensures long-term viability of your water system should something happen to your crossings of your river or in Providence itself.
And just so the public understands, the two existing 32-inch pipes will remain in place supplying, Providence will continue to supply water to East Providence, and what you're proposing, or what Bristol Water County Authority is proposing, is this will be a backup source?
This is a dedicated transmission line for emergency supply, is what we're calling it. There will be a draw on the pipe daily because you can't let municipal portable water go stale, so there'll be a slight draw on it to get turnover on the pipe so it remains potable. But the concept is it has the ability to open valves and allow much more flow, push much more flow, both to East Providence and to Bristol County. It's a symbiotic relationship. It's a net gain for both communities.
Okay. Thank you.
So during this keep-open-flow, where is the water? Who is accessing that water? Is it Bristol County or is it East Providence?
During what?
So the second, the interconnection that you're talking about that has to, you have to keep the water moving so it's not stagnant?
Yes.
Where is that? Is that going into East Providence's water system?
It depends on the demand of the day, but there'll be restrictions on that, just so Bristol County isn't unnecessarily drawing down East Providence's tank and vice versa, just so East Providence isn't unknowingly or unduly taking too much water from Bristol County and impacting the ability to provide water to their customers.
Okay.
So the project goals ultimately is to create water system redundancy to ensure the supply of water to both communities should something happen on the supply end from Providence water. Phase One, as I stated, establishes that interconnection between Bristol County Water Authority and the East Providence water system. Again, this allows for the inspection and condition assessment of the cross-bay pipelines and allows for the rehabilitation if needed. There is a Phase Two of the project. We're really not going to get into that tonight, but ultimately, what that does, it continues the pipe from Kent Heights all the way to the City of Pawtucket. Pawtucket is a water provider, just like the City of Providence is. And ultimately, what that establishes is two sole sources of water. That way, East Providence and Bristol County Water Authority are protected. If there was a catastrophic failure in Providence, you would still have that guaranteed supply from the City of Pawtucket coming from the south, coming from the north heading south and vice versa. Once you establish that connection and Pawtucket called and said, "We can't provide you water," you still have Providence. But in either regard, you have two separate sole sources, where right now, both East Providence and Bristol County have one source and only one source. And if something happens to that source, then you potentially have no water, depending on the nature of the failure. So about a year ago, we came to East Providence and talked about a number of alternatives and tried to gain some interest and approval for this project. At that time, we presented multiple alternatives, but eventually came down to the two that we deemed most viable. The two that we deemed most viable a year ago, I'll recite again tonight so everyone knows at least the two most viable alternatives we did evaluate, and hopefully, ultimately, we're hoping to decide on a final routing alternative here and move forward with this So the first alternative that we presented to the city was what we're calling Alternative One, and it's traditional construction, open trench methods up Pawtucket Ave, from the Silver Springs Golf Course heading northerly up Pawtucket Ave to Wampenog Trail, then heading east on Wampenog over to Dover, and then northerly up Dover to the Kent Heights water tank site. The pros of the alternatives, of the number of alternatives that we evaluated, this was the shortest, and the pipe does remain in the right-of-way where you typically prefer to have your utilities. Unfortunately, because Pawtucket Ave is a congested utility corridor, it would necessitate that this pipe be buried below much of the existing utilities, with an average depth of burial of 10 feet. Standard depth of burial on a water pipe is on the order of five feet. So that would raise concerns for just long-term maintenance, should you ever have to get at the pipe. It just complicates getting down to 10 feet to repair a water pipe. Some of the other negatives, utility coordination, if we've got to get under these utilities, a large number of them are going to have to be relocated in order to just get the depth. Significant impacts to traffic, businesses, residential properties that abut Pawtucket Ave, roadway restoration, it is a state road, there's restoration requirements that we would have to meet. Then we have environmental concerns, there's dry cleaners and two gas stations on the northern extents of Pawtucket Ave at Wampenog Trail. Groundwater is shallow up there as well. These are all things that we concern ourselves with during construction. And then afterwards, the long-term maintenance of that pipe and any degradation that may result as it relates to the environment that's around it. There are permitting requirements because it's a state road, work hour restrictions typically, nine to three, that prohibits construction, lengthens construction duration out, you just can't get that daily production that you typically would get on a town road, and then rock and lynch concerns. The total pipe length is about 6,700 feet and an approximate construction cost of $5.1 The second alternative, after we pick up the water pipe on Pawtucket Ave, we would head easterly to the Village Green Apartment Complex and then start to head north into that purple, I've identified three easements in the different colors there. The first one to the bottom is Village Green Apartments. We would have to procure an easement through them, and we would install the pipe adjacent to a tennis court there. Head northerly into Citizens Bank Parking Lot, and then through the woods, the green-shaded section that's owned by the City of East Providence. It's a wooded lot, and we would come through on Elder Ave, which is a town road, and head northerly up to Wampenog Trail. Once we hit Wampenog Trail, we would head to the west, back over to Dover. North of Wampenog Trail, the project is essentially the same. It's just south of there, which would be different. This alternative offers many pros, the biggest of which is it minimizes that significant exposure you would have on Pawtucket Ave, the traffic concerns, the headaches with customers complaining about the ongoing construction. Minimizes the conflicts with the utilities as well. There'll be less expense as it relates to utility relocation. Still, the majority of the pipe is within the existing right-of-way outside of the easement area, but the easement area, you don't have to bury the pipe at 10 feet of depth either, so we should be able to go through there quicker. All right? It is an additional length, about 20%. You still have some DOT permitting requirements, but they're not as strict and stringent in the three easements. This is about 20% longer, 8,300 feet, but it does have a smaller price tag primarily because we're anticipating the contractor to be able to be more productive on a daily basis with less restriction.
On the first alternative, you have some environmental concerns. However, on the second alternative, you don't have any environmental concerns. Where do you see and why do you have concerns on the first alternative versus?
There could be environmental concerns on the second phase. We have delineated these on the first phase because we've done about a 75% design on the first phase, because when we met with the city last year, Option One was the preferred alternative at that time. So we've gone and done survey, geotechnical, we've submitted samples to laboratory for analyses. So we have the documentation to demonstrate that these are our concerns. I would, you know, I had an inclination to that because, you know, you drive the road and you're in construction, you're working in and around gas stations that are typically When we stop and head north up Dover Ave, we're not yet to that where the new Cumberland Farms is. That's been a gas station over there for 75 years. Not Cumberland Farms, but in one way or another, it's been a gasoline dispensary there for a long time. So I have concerns there. We're going to be stopping shorter there. There is a chance that some of that contamination has migrated off-site. We won't know until we do some exploratory borings up on Wampenog Trail in that general vicinity. But it does, at least on appearance sake, appear to be less of a, and less chance of environmental concerns in this route. But it'll have to be vetted out through engineering.
Thank you.
So a quick summary of the alternatives, one and two. You know, one is shorter, 6,700 feet, $5.1 million, and the second one, even though it's longer, we're anticipating a slightly less construction cost because of those, less headaches on Pawtucket Ave and better daily production. So a year ago, a little more than a year ago, the administration and city council representative at that time that we presented to favored the Pawtucket Ave route, so again, we went and advanced. From April through November of last year, we were full bore on an engineering design for that first phase. So we completed a preliminary one design, geotechnical. We did over 30 borings from the tank site all the way down to Silver Springs. Specifically on Pawtucket Ave, we encountered ledge at a depth of five to eight feet. That's problematic when we're anticipating an average depth of burial of 10 feet. That means we're going to have to get six, seven feet of ledge removed. Depth-wise, per foot of pipe installed, which means the contractor's going to be out there on a daily basis, hammer and rock, hammer, and there'll be some days that he doesn't get a pipe installed because he hasn't removed, you know, a standard duct-to-lion pipe is 20 feet in length. If he doesn't have depth for 20 feet, he's not going to get a pipe in. And depending on how DOT sees it, they may require us to backfill. So you spent the whole day hammer and rock, digging, hammer and rock, and then backfilling to just starting in tomorrow. Existing pavement, on average, on the state road is five inches of asphalt on top of nine inches of reinforced concrete. Reinforced concrete slows down daily production as well. It's one more step, not only for the initial excavation, but typically, they require it to be restored at the end, so you're having to pour concrete, dowel it into the adjacent concrete. It's just, it's labor-intensive, and it really slows the process down. Again, water main average depth, 10 feet, due to many of the existing utilities, the environmental concerns. I didn't really touch on the dry cleaners, but there's been a dry cleaner. That one dry cleaner has jumped from one side of the street to the other over time. Dry cleaners typically have, in and around them, have chlorinated solvents in the groundwater. So again, that's just another long-term thing that we would have to consider as we install the water pipe. Shallow groundwater at Wampenog Trail, so that's at the intersection with Pawtucket Ave at that gas station. So if we did go Alternative One up there, the construction presence would typically involve a de-watering operation in a large 20,000-gallon tank and carbon units to treat the groundwater that would, we would have to pull out even to get the pipe into the ground. It's just one more roadblock in construction. The state road work hour restrictions, specifically, south of Veterans Memorial Parkway would certainly be nine to three because of the heavy traffic volume. Due to the traffic volume on Pawtucket Ave and the geotech concerns and the state road hour, state work hour restrictions, we're anticipating a production of 200 feet, 20 feet per day, which is one stick of pipe. Based on that length, construction duration on Pawtucket Ave should be anticipated to be 200 days in order to complete the limits of work if Alternative One ultimately was the chosen alternative. So it'd be 200 days on Pawtucket Ave. That's not the project, that's just Pawtucket Ave and Wampenog Trail. And again, the impacts to businesses, traffic, existing utilities. I didn't really touch on it, but the impacts to the school, baby academy, I know traffic is, without construction, it's four lanes full at 8:00 in the morning. So that would have a significant impact as it relates to that school. Contrary to that, Alternative Two, specifically because we're running essentially parallel to Pawtucket Ave, but for a large portion of it, where it's easement work or a town-traveled roadway, minimizes, almost eliminates your exposure on Pawtucket Ave. We would still have to get across Pawtucket Ave over to Village Green, so I don't want to... So I don't want that, there's still going to be an impact, but it's significantly less. All right? So significantly less traffic impacts, customer complaints, you know, residents and businesses complaining. You don't have to deal with those DOT work hour restrictions. We will have to deal with those on Wampanoag Trail. But Wampanoag Trail is a pretty wide road and it's not as traveled as at least the southern portions of Patucket Ave. It minimizes those conflicts with the existing utilities. We can be buried in a shallow at depth. We may still hit ledge out in the easements, but if we're in the wooded lot and that's owned by East Providence, we're hammering ledge out there, we're not bothering many. Couple abutting residents will probably complain, but that's not going to be the level of complaints that you're going to see on Patucket Ave. And we're expecting a quicker duration for construction, quicker installation. That's why we see that cost going down. But there are easements required, three easements that are required. Last time I was here, we were just getting going on the easements, reaching out to the stakeholders, so I can provide you an update as it relates to that. That first picture, top left, that would be the easement that would be required from the Village Green Apartments. We'd be traveling just to the right of that tennis court you can see. Turns out, doing a little digging, the City of East Providence currently has a sewer easement that was procured in 2013, I believe. The sewer was not constructed. So it appears that there's a mechanism in place that we don't have to go get a brand-new easement. I think the current easement, we could probably work with and possibly amend to allow. The sewer was never constructed, so the easement was put in place but never constructed. I don't know specifically why. But it certainly seems it would be easier to amend an existing easement as opposed to trying to get a brand-new easement afresh. The second picture on the top to the right, so that's a picture looking south from the woods into Citizens Bank Parking Lot. We've had multiple teleconference calls with Citizens Bank. They at least initially appear amenable to an easement. So much so that we've completed our drone survey and we're completing our land survey on their property this week. We'll be done with the land survey on Friday. Looking south from Elder Street, that's looking into the woods, that's owned by the City of East Providence. And the picture on the lower right is just in the midpoint of those woods that are owned by East Providence. So that would be the last easement that would be required in order to get this project So I pretty much just went through these updates and those pictures, but we got the initial discussions with Citizens Bank and they're amenable to the easement, at least they appear so right now. Survey should be complete this week. And there is an existing sewer easement adjacent to the tennis court, that's a East Providence easement, that we'd be looking to possibly amend to allow the water pipe to be installed as well. So that's ultimately where we're at. We're looking for some input on how we advance and we'd like to, we got the survey going, so we'd like to get going on the design.
Couple questions.
Counselor, if I can just make one quick announcement that was just brought to my attention, that we have folks on Facebook Live who's watching this, so they're able to actually ask any questions and we can, if you don't mind, you know, if they have some questions from the public for Facebook Live, they can actually ask those questions and we can answer them here publicly as well.
No problem.
So, thank you. I'm sorry.
No, no, that's great. I know it's a public hearing and I don't see any many people here, so maybe that social media live will help. But Phase One is strictly dealing with Providence water, correct? That's in all aspects, that's the Situate reservoir water.
Correct.
And right now, East Providence is a backup to Bristol County and vice versa?
Correct.
Okay, and if there is a shutdown and we need to do any kind of backing up, it will be Situate water of base, the base of it. That's where it's coming from. Is that correct?
I don't.
I mean, our water is Situate, yours is?
Yes, with this pipeline, which is Phase One, it's all Situate water.
Okay. So then when we go to Phase Two, the backup would be the Pawtucket water supply in a catastrophic emergency?
That's correct.
Can you answer this question in general? It's a question that brought to my attention by a few residents. Personally, I think that will work, but there's a notion in the community with some people that the quality of the Pawtucket water is not the same as the Situate water or what we're used to. How do you find that? I mean, we may have no choice, that might be the only thing available, but...
Having been both in Pawtucket and Providence, I would have to say that the water is very comparable. It is treated differently so that when we receive a combination of both water supplies, we may be treating the water to whichever quality that we want to have it in. But Providence water has a very high pH. Pawtucket water treats us to more of a neutral pH, which is typically done with most water supplies.
Thank you. And the only, my last question at this time is, you mentioned, Paul, that you came before the city with this proposal before. I assume that was the prior city administration and council?
That's correct.
Okay, and even though it appears you may have been leaning towards option two, there was some discussion that the then-city was looking towards option one, but the bottom line is nothing was done? Nothing went forward at all?
Engineering went forward, so we...
Right, yeah, basic work was done, the department heads, you folks, but as far as a decision from the City of East Providence, that it never got to that point?
When we met, it was previous administration and it was one city councillor at the time. And the indication was Pawtucket Ave is the way it's going to go. So Bristol County's stance is this job needs to go, this pipe needs to get in the ground. So we advanced under that direction that we're going to get the pipe in on Pawtucket Ave. Subsequent to that design, there's been some turnover, new mayor. So we thought it was the best decision to revisit, you know, that direction in the first place. Because for the most part, we were favoring the second alternative and we obviously have to get buy-in from city council and the mayor. So that's why we came back, you know, early on this year.
Thank you. I would just ask President Brito, you were here at the time, I think, and Councilwoman Susan, was there a public discussion or a vote? And we don't have to get into specifics on that, I just want to establish the history and I think we're ready to move forward, but...
I don't recall personally of a vote. There was a discussion, yes, but a vote, I don't recall that whatsoever.
Nor do I.
Okay. Thank you.
If I may, I have a few questions, but they're good. Some of these questions I have the answers to, I just wanted to make it public.
Yep.
So that we can educate the public as to why we're having this discussion and why this is very necessary.
Yep.
First of all, this would have no cost, this Phase One would have no cost to the city, correct?
That's correct. As we stated, we started looking at this back in 2012. There was actually a bond by the state that would have paid for 50% of the project all the way to Pawtucket. It never moved forward and since that time, all the fundings disappeared. Our board and town councils have become very nervous that we don't have a backup supply. So they said, well, we'll build it ourselves then, we'll build this 24-inch pipe, at least we can get a reliable supply, a secondary supply from Providence through the East Providence connection.
My next question, can you explain currently the type of pipe that is servicing East Providence? The material?
The pipes that you have across the bay are steel pipes, there's two of them.
That's Bristol County, how about East Providence?
East Providence as well.
Okay, and that pipe is known to have failed elsewhere, right?
Outside of the crossing, it's pre-stressed concrete cylinder pipe, which in and around here is known to have problems. Pam knows specifically of an instance in Providence. We do know that that pipe that serves East Providence all the way to the tank site has not been inspected. The ability to take it offline and inspect it just isn't there. This Phase One project accomplishes that, allows for that. And we're talking all the way back into Cranston, the City of East Providence's pipe, is that pre-stressed concrete cylinder pipe, I believe that's five miles of pipe, that's on the order of 50 years old, that has not been inspected.
And there's no way to inspect that other than turning the water off, correct?
That's correct.
You can't do that right now currently.
In order to get any kind of instrumentation into the pipe, it has to be shut.
And if we tied into, if we obviously go with this plan, then we would have a secondary source which then we can inspect the other pipe, correct?
That's correct.
And then the current East Providence pipeline, from what I understand, sits on the surface of the river, correct?
Yes.
From what we understand, you might want to speak more with your superintendent.
Is that true?
No, it's actually trenched.
It's trenched.
He could step right up, Mr. Marvel.
The reason why I bring that up, because I heard recently when Providence had that crane issue with the, that owner of that crane that was in Providence, they made him...
I'm intimately familiar with it.
It was dangerously close to our pipeline, so it could have created a problem if that thing sank, correct?
Yes, it could have.
And I'm just trying to make the point of how dangerously close that we could be without a water supply line. Anything could happen and that would have been one incident that could have been...
That's an incident, a catastrophic failure is also a possibility. You know, we've been looking at doing that pipeline analysis for a few years. Just to ease your mind a bit, that pipe does not lay on top of the river bottom, it's trenched and it's about five or six feet below grade.
Okay, I thought it was on, I thought contrary to Bristol County, I thought they were in a tunnel of some sort.
Well, they did it nowhere indifferent. You know, the construction methods we used were from the 60s.
I have one more question. If we decide to go through with the second option, which seems to be the most reasonable, we just, we resurfaced Pawtucket Avenue not too long ago and there was a disaster, never mind digging, that's one of main...
I know, I had boring, I had boring schedule the day they did the resurfacing and I had no idea. And we called DOT and they were surprised that there was paving going on as well.
As you said, it's four lanes of traffic at certain times of the day, especially when schools in and rush hour. And just to ease some of the residents, if we do go with the phase, second option, obviously you're not going to be closing every single road on that route, you're going to be doing a certain amount of length throughout the day. So it's kind of like leapfrogging.
Yeah.
Yeah, one or two intersections blocked off, it's really...
Yeah, and there's always, there's always traffic control as it relates to a project. Contractor's always required to submit a traffic control plan and that's something that we have to prove, not only us, but in conjunction with the city, to make sure that the city's on board with that. Additionally, one of the complaints is always, can I get into my driveway? Am I going to be able to get to my house? Residents should always be able to get to their house. It may be a five-minute wait for a contractor to grab a steel plate to encompass his trench so that they can commute safely, but residential, I don't anticipate major impacts as it relates to going up a city-side street. You'd have a police officer detail as well to help coordinate any type of movement like that.
And my last question, and then when we get to the Phase Two of this process, we will once again have a discussion and council, you know...
Yeah, because Phase Two's roughly three times the length of this project, so it's just conceptual at this point, the alignment, but we're going to have to, how I envision it is that because the survey cost on a 25,000 linear foot job is a heavy cost, we don't want to be doing what we had to do this time, which is essentially going to be complete two designs. So we're going to want to fine-tune and come to a consensus on the preferred path that makes the most sense and then move forward with the design.
Thank you.
So before I go into the Facebook question that we have, I have a question that was asked during the last workshop or the first workshop that we had, just as this all been coordinated with the road pavement schedule that we currently have. And Mr. Kudrow is shaking his head, yes, so it has been coordinated with that schedule. With that being said, we do have a Facebook question and it says, do we have a cost associated with the plan? So can you just put the alternates up here? One, I don't know if you can split, can you split as well? Because it will show on the alternate one and two, it does have the...
The summary sheet has them both, there we go.
Okay.
So alternative one's on the top, 5.1. Alternative two, roughly 4.7.
Okay, very good.
So previously, there was mention that there was grant funding initially some time ago. What is, is there any funding for this project now or where does the cost lie within?
No. So... There is no funding available at this time, but our board decided they're going to go ahead and it's, and fortuitous considering with the situation we're in now, but they do want to go ahead and complete this phase. For the next phase, we are looking for some assistance, perhaps more federal. The state is not being forthcoming at this point, we don't see that happening in the future. So we are pursuing federal funding and I know the mayor's working diligently on that as well.
So this, this cost would be for Bristol County Water Authority?
Yes.
And East Providence or just Bristol County?
Just Bristol County.
Okay.
So Facebook question number two reads, will Barrington be responsible in lowering any of that cost?
Barrington? Barrington is part of the Bristol County Water System, yes, so they will be sharing in the cost.
Okay. Thank you. Council members, any other further questions? I know we had a workshop several weeks ago and there were a lot of questions at that point in time that were answered and it was Facebook Live and I hope public got a chance and opportunity to watch that video. However, if there's anything else, please...
Mr. President, a question I have at this point is, in my mind, we have to do nothing is not an option. We don't want to open faucet someday and not have water. So we have to do something. But what is the procedure from here? Are we voting on anything tonight? Do we, I know our expert had told us that we need to do this sooner rather than later. So maybe, Mr. Solicitor, what is the best fast-forward plan to get this going?
So specific to the original supposition, you will not be voting on anything tonight, it's not listed for that. I don't believe there's a request for a vote or approval immediately before us, but if there was something subsequent, we can get it on the next regular council meeting.
Okay.
We have at least a discussion on which option? Can we, is that okay to do that?
You can have a discussion, you just can't vote.
So we can have a discussion on which option and then we can put it up for vote? Is that how it's going to work?
Sounds like, yeah, put it up for vote at another time, yes.
So I personally like option two, just the fact that it doesn't disrupt Bayview Academy, that main artery, one of the main arteries for residents entering and exiting Riverside. And it just makes a lot more sense.
Mr. President, if I may?
Please.
And thank you everybody for your flexibility. We lost six to two, but better result next time maybe. So when we went through this last time, like Mr. Roderick's, you know, I'm convinced that we really don't have any other, you know, other than these two options, we don't have a choice. We've got to go through with this and, you know, the events of the past few weeks have kind of, you know, brought that home. Either way, either of these two options kind of makes a mess out of Ward Three. So there isn't really a good option from, you know, from the standpoint of Ward Three traffic, et cetera. I think Ward Two is better from my perspective. I'd like to add one thing that I did ask at the workshop we had, and that was specifically about, you know, school zones and how we're going to coordinate around... about, you know, school zones and how we're going to coordinate around school zones. And we've got, you know, a school that's right in the middle, right there when we come up Dover Avenue toward the water tower, you know, Kent Heights School is right there. So, and I did ask specifically about, you know, how is this going to be coordinated with kind of the traffic that we're going to be, you know, driving north of this project when the new high school starts to get built because that's going to cause some churn with traffic too. So it sounds to me like Two is the better option. I don't think either one of them is ideal for any of the people living in Ward Three, but ultimately it's a lot more ideal than not having water. So, you know, my, my push would be for Option Two.
Well, being a council member from Ward One who's not impacted by this at all from a traffic point of view, I would just prefer to hold off on my vote and see with those people or those council people who have, who's going to be tremendously impacted by this. And I would like to hear from them before voting on. I have an option that I would prefer. However, I would prefer to hear the options from those who are going to be impacted most. And I would prefer to go in that direction.
Mr. President, being at Lodge Councilman, certainly I know I will have residents contacting me as a person who grew up in Kent Heights and lived there recently for a while. Intimately familiar with the streets, Dover Avenue, Kent Heights School. I know exactly where the impact is going to be. It's the option I prefer from what I see, Option Two. We in East Providence cannot afford to tie up Pawtucket Avenue any more than it already is. I mean, it's going to continue to be a nightmare with the state projects going on and we haven't even begun to start with the high school project. Even tonight, just coming here, there was some traffic problems near Bradley Hospital and it took me a while to get to this, this area. I mean Pawtucket Avenue is not going to go away for a while. To heap on top of that with this project is not a good option in my mind. As Councilman Cahoon said, for those living in Ward Three, they're not going to be thrilled with this either, but certainly not going to be thrilled with the option of not having water someday. And we know that that's a very real threat. Your pipe in Bristol County Water was built in 98 and you're leaking. We were built in 65 or six or 67 and, you know, we're much older and the threat is there. So unless through the mayor's office or Steve Kudus' office or others, I certainly would go by your recommendations as well if you feel there's a better option. I'm open to it, but from what I've heard so far, Option Two is the option I would support.
Thank you, Councilman. For all the reasons stated by the council people up here, we strongly support Option Two. We feel it's the most, least disruptive, least disruptive to the community as a whole, most cost-effective. And we realize that Bristol County Water Authority will be footing the bill for all of this and we appreciate that. But just to inform the council, we've spoken to our federal delegation, both Senator Whitehouse's office, Senator Reed's office, Congresswoman Sisaline's office, and informed them that should any infrastructure bill come up either this year or next year, that we would strongly hope that they would consider funding to take us from Kent Heights Water Tower all the way to Pawtucket. And as stated by some of the council people up here today already, this is not to change our water source from one to another, it's to have that backup. I know a lot of people are concerned, Councilman Roderick's, I've seen or heard the same concerns. We're not looking to change our water source from the Situate Reservoir to the Pawtucket Water Supply, but we need that. And it's such a timely event that's occurring now with Bristol County Water that, God forbid, if the situation were flipped around and it was our pipe that was leaking and for some reason we had to shut it down to repair it, the Bristol County, the current Bristol County connection to our water system would not be sufficient to provide water to all of East Providence. So it's ultimately, it's an emergent situation. I hope that by the next council meeting, we'll have a resolution that can be drafted up and that the council will at that point vote on that so we can get going with the project.
And if I could ask, Mr. Mayor, it's safe to say that while some streets may be impacted in Kent Heights, a catastrophic breakdown could, and I'm not trying to jinx anything, but it could and would affect the entire city. We would probably see a lack of water pressure, I'm assuming, because there's not enough water. So the bad problem in the end is going to affect everybody in East Providence. The immediate problem of building this phase would be to the streets of Kent Heights and a little bit of Pawtucket Avenue, but certainly all of East Providence will either suffer or benefit, whichever way this goes.
Absolutely, absolutely. And to Councilman Cahoon's concerns regarding the school, construction during the schools, especially around Kent Heights School where my children attended, I totally agree with what Councilman Cahoon says. And when we had our first workshop, we did ask whether or not we'd be able to build this in both sides at the same time. So they'd be able to build the Kent Heights portion on Dover Avenue surrounding the school during summertime when school was not in session. They can actually start from two directions. They could start from the water tower in and then from Pawtucket Avenue in and do the work around the school section when school's not in session. So that would be the least disruptive option, if I'm correct, right?
Yes.
Okay.
And Mr. Mayor, you and I both live in that neighborhood, so you and I both know we'll be hearing it from the neighbors if it's not ideal.
I, I know. I have to travel that road every day.
Yes, sir. Thank you. So.
No, but I do have some questions here from Facebook, our friends at Facebook Live. And the first one is, what percent will Barrington be responsible for?
Over percent. Barrington will not be responsible for any of the costs. We are asking for some help with the police and for public relations. So we will be working closely with the city on those issues.
Okay. And will we see an increase in our water bills?
No, since there is no charge to East Providence.
Okay. How quickly will this be started and completed?
We are hoping to start early next spring. Hopefully, most of the work will be completed within one year, especially since it's shallower and we don't find much ledge. Restoration, full street restoration would probably be the following year.
And with respect to the leak that you currently had experienced, is there a future plan, is there a future plan in place to correct this? And if, and if this should happen again, is there a future plan in place to correct this if it should happen again? Excuse me.
Yes. One of the things is we have been talking about with this 24-inch main installation, we can also shut down our water main so we can do a full inspection. What they do is have a fairly large size instrument that goes inside the pipe and it measures the thickness of the walls and will pick up any anomalies in the pipe. And we can send that right through the entire pipe. And that's both what East Providence is looking to do and we are looking to do. For this leak right now, we are working on it. We're right now trying to de-water the site to bring the water level down below the pipe. The pipe is about 12 and a half feet deep, so this is going to take a little bit of time. And then we can actually try and find what the leak is, depending on if it's a weld that's broken or a hole in the line or deteriorate, some other type of deterioration will depend on what needs to, we have to do to repair it.
Have you located the leak?
We have a general idea, but we have not dug it up yet until we get it de-watered. The groundwater gets down below the pipeline.
And how accurate is this equipment that you have to use to detect these leaks?
And the equipment, once we are set up for that, will, it's generally fairly accurate.
Okay.
We've seen a lot of good reports with it.
Okay. So President.
I have one more question, but go ahead. No, I'm on a.
Okay. I just want to ask the Solicitor, is this going to require two passages or one vote will do it? So let's say we schedule for the next council meeting, we put it on the agenda as a vote. Is, what's the process?
It depends on what they're requesting at this time. I imagine it's going to be some level of design. There may be some property concerns, amendments to easements, those sorts of things. So by the time we're done with the project, there may be several votes over months, but what I will do is immediately work with the Bristol Water County Supply Board to determine what they want from us today and sort of a timeline, what their expectations are for different legal interests.
I, I just want to reiterate that I think, you know, sooner the better. We can do whatever we have to do. Safe to say, we're not out of the woods yet with the leak that you're experiencing. Should this become a catastrophic event, we are your backup and that may affect East Providence in terms of pressure or some other issues. Is that fairly accurate?
There is the possibility, but if we need to switch to the East Providence supply, we will be putting restrictions on the usage on our system. And there's enough for general, our average day supply, but at this time of year, it could start peaking because of mays coming, gardens are coming in. And what we would do is totally restrict any outdoor usage and so we can keep that average day usage down fairly low. In that case, it should not have any effect.
Do East Providence officials, do we see any need that we, under those circumstances, we might have to issue similar restrictions? I don't know.
It's, it's all a matter of timing. Right now, we're in the low flow period of the year. We don't foresee for the next six to eight weeks that it would have much of an impact on us at all. If it does impact any section of the city, it will be predominantly Riverside. We've isolated the feed for Bristol County, so it would not impact the rest of the system.
Okay, thank you.
And I just have one more question that I'll read off. Once the pipeline is installed, how often will it be inspected?
The new pipeline?
Yes.
Generally, what I've been trying to do is set up at least a five-year inspection system with our pipeline. This is, we were setting up to do our initial one in the next year, but generally five, every five years is typical.
Thank you.
I just have a question. In comparison to Alternative One, the depth of pipeline that we, the depth that has to be dug, drenched, what is the Alternative Two? How far would you anticipate having to dredge, to trench for that pipe?
So specifically in the easements, we should be able to get shallower. Overall, I'm hoping that we're shallower, but that's going to have to, that's going to be dictated by the available corridor to install a new pipe and some of your conflicts, which would be sewers coming from your side streets, stuff like that. That'll all have to get evaluated as part of the design process as we move forward. But we do hope that we can get a shallower depth of berry.
Okay. I mean, overall, Option Two, as my colleagues have mentioned, is the, I think, the more desirable route to take as it, though it doesn't minimize disruption to the community because there's, anytime there's road work or construction, there's going to be interruptions. But as the mayor mentioned, and I also agree, I think if we articulate the right times to do it and plan it strategically, we can probably minimize some overall disturbances in the school area with traffic, which would be beneficial, seeing how we'd be off of the main roads for the most part.
As we advance with, with the design, within the contract specifications, we can put parameters and restrictions that the contractor has to work around. And specifically, you know, Dover Av, anything Dover to the tank site, we could stipulate has to be done, you know, late June till late August.
Okay. Any other further questions from the council prior to us moving to our next item? All right. Our last question, this will be, okay. Oh, okay. I see now. How can the people of East Providence get updates on the progress?
Actually, we'll be working with the town and doing, we'll have a regular email list and we'll, we'll have a, probably a, on your Facebook page, we can have regular updates put on as things progress.
And while we're discussing that, can we have it on our city page as well where people could just go right to the?
I believe that's currently under reconstruction also.
One of the, one of the asks that Bristol County Water Authority had of us was that we would help with the advertising and the public notification aspect of this project. And we have committed to that. They also would like us to see if we can help them with some of the traffic control as far as police officers and see how that works out. So we're willing to help in that regard.
All right. That concludes our questions for the evening. Just like to thank you all for coming here. Appreciate the presentation. Any other questions, they can refer it over to the mayor's office or Bristol County Water Authority. With that being said, moving right over there. With that being said, we're going to move on to item number five, resolution authorizing the mayor to pay invoices for the pre-construction expenses for the new East Providence High School. Councilman Cahoon, would you like to take the lead on this, please?
Absolutely. And thank you, everybody, for waiting on me to kind of provide any details here. So the amount being requested is $836,877.86. Again, this amount is subject to the reimbursement by way of bond, also by reimbursement by the state in accordance with the state's own bond that they are taking to support school construction. These invoices are for architectural services for the month of March and for the owner's project manager services for the month of March. In addition to the owner's project, owner project manager services, which are typically $59,000 per month, there's a $10,000 charge. The school had to complete a feasibility assessment by way of a local law firm for whether or not it's a good idea to do a PLA, Project Labor Agreement, for this specific project. Due to the assessment that we received back, the building committee has decided that we are going to pursue a PLA for, for the building project. PLA is an agreement basically among all of the different trades that are going to be participating in the project to make sure that we know what our rates are for the course of the project, to make sure that we have a stable labor pool for the course of the project. So that's, that's why the OPM cost is a little bit higher this month. What we're seeing from the architectural costs are right on budget. The architectural fees to this point are exactly in line with what they scheduled they would charge up to this point. They have completed schematic design. The next big milestone is the design documents to be completed in August timeframe and the construction documents, full construction documents to be completed in the October timeframe. The groundbreaking for the school remains June 5th or 6th, and I believe that that was dependent upon the governor's schedule. The school department was reaching out to find out when the governor might be available because obviously this is something she's going to want to participate in. So we're going to set that based on that date. But as soon as I have that date, and we probably won't need a meeting for you to hear about that date, I'm sure that'll come through one channel or another. But again, as with all of these invoices, they are reviewed by the owner's project manager, who we hired simply, not simply, but specifically to review the course, the progress of the project. They're reviewed by the building committee, recommended for approval by the building committee, recommended for approval by the school committee. So these do hit several checks before they find their way to the council. We did reject one invoice. We've recently hired a commissioning agent. A commissioning agent is someone who's brought on to make sure that the design systems work specifically or work exactly as they are designed once they are put in the building. If you think about mechanical, electric and plumbing, that's one of the things, MEP, that's one of the things that the commissioning agent looks at to make sure that it does work. The commissioning agent's first invoice was not recommended for approval. The commissioning agent's first invoice was not recommended for approval by the building committee, sent back for additional detail. So, you don't see that one in here. So, that's a lot to say. I guess I'll throw it back to you all, see if you have any questions.
So, I do, I have a question, Councilman. So, this invoice is solely for the month of March. Would the council be anticipating monthly bills like this for payment? Or is, as you mentioned, in August, there's going to be a completion of the architecture and then there'll be another invoice then in October? You mentioned there's going to be another completion there, they'd be looking for payment then, or is this a monthly basis?
There's actually two invoices in here, and the architectural one is actually much bigger. The OPM one is always around $59,000. The architect one is most of it. What they're billing is in accordance basically with the budget, if you will, that's established in the contract, and actually, the cash flow that they analyze on a month-to-month basis is reviewed with, you know, the bi-weekly meetings that the building committee has with the mayor's office, et cetera. So, the city has a heads-up on what's coming in. That's a long way of saying we are going to continue to get bills. We can anticipate what those amounts are going to be based on what the cost of the contracts are. So, I can certainly provide you with additional detail as to what we're looking at in May, June, July, August, September, if you think that would be helpful.
Yes, I think it would, because we don't know when the bond payments will be coming in either, correct?
We do not. Currently, the, well, there's two steps. The city has to complete going out for its own bond, right? Because we voted for the $189 million bond, so that's part of what the city hired, kind of that bond advisory firm to kind of take us through that process. That's step one. Step two is, we have to have the funds flow down from the state that are, have been, I don't want to say promised, but have been basically authorized by way of their own bond that the state took for $250 million and the share that we're getting for the school. Now, when that money is going to start to come through, I've heard May, I've heard June. I don't know. It's going to require our state delegation to kind of help us out with that, and I do know that they're engaged. But the state is trying to work through a couple of different processes because they haven't done this before, and they want to make sure that it's done properly. So, that could be May, it could be June. The only answer I can give you is, I'll have to get back to you. But yes, that should start to roll in soon here because the city cannot continue to pay for the entire school, right, without that funding showing up.
Right, and that's, then that's really my concern because we're looking at this monthly bill that's almost $1 million, and if we're getting subsequent monthly bills, you know, the city not having budgeted for this because we were thinking, you know, we're getting that bond, and we know we're going to get reimbursed from the bond. Obviously, the city's going to be reimbursed as soon as the bond is passed. I'm just wondering what the bond process, where we are in the bond process, if you will, Mayor, in terms of the financial department getting that rolling or the firm getting that going? And then, part two to that question, I'll let you answer first, is, do we know in addition to the 55% that RIDE was giving, what additional percentage that we were getting from the state having the 250 pass?
We do not.
Okay.
So, in speaking to our finance department and sitting down with our advisor, our fiscal advisor, and our bond people, what we've decided to do is, instead of going out and getting that money from the bond that was passed by the residents right now, which would start a kick-in interest payments right away, we're going to wait until, I think, September, October because we have enough cash flow with the TANs and with the anticipated revenue that comes in from when our tax bills go out, that it should carry us through to September, October. And that would be a significant savings in interest on the bond. So, that's a decision that we made because we're trying to be as fiscally conservative with this project as possible. If I could, Councilman, just to share with the public and with yourselves, I took a trip up to Plymouth North today, which is a school that was built two years ago, designed by the same architectural firm that's designing our school. I left that place, my jaw was dropped. I was in awe of how beautiful the facility is. I am so pleased that our school is going to have a lot of the same features that this particular school has, and I can't wait. I can't wait to see this project completed. When I tell you, it's hard to imagine, because we've seen pictures on, you know, boards and conceptual ideas, but when you're in there and just the flow of the students, I've never seen students change between classes. It was the most orderly process I'd ever seen. The integration of the vocational with the academic, it's just fascinating. I am so proud that we are the first community in the last 16 years to have a brand-new school built, and it's going to do so much for this community. You should all be very proud of it. And I'm very proud of Councilman Cahoon and what the school committee's done in the past to make this become a reality with the leadership of the superintendent. Very impressive, very impressive.
With regard to, Mr. Mayor, since I've got you there, with regard to the bi-weekly meetings that you're, I know your office is kind of having with that steering committee, if you will, of the building committee.
Yes.
Are you finding that those are satisfactory and they're providing enough information?
So, we have regular meetings with the school department, with our advisor, with the school department's project manager to go over the bills. So, we sit down there, our finance director's there, fiscal, our financial advisor's there. Everyone's there. The finance director from the school department, myself, I sit in all the meetings, and we go over line by line what the bills are, and then we come through to approve. Now, once we start drawing down from the bond, I think then we don't have to come and ask for a resolution, from what I understand, every single time, because now that's already been approved by you and the people. But I think for transparency purposes, this is a good, it's a good exercise in letting the people know what we're doing, and once we get that open go going, it's really going to, you know, really track everything that's being spent, so.
So, back to your question, Councilwoman, so that cash flow sheet, I haven't actually looked at one in a couple of months because it doesn't change a whole lot, but I will get you a current one, and I will make sure that, should we need to come back with another one of these resolutions for the May meeting, I've got that as backup, and we're providing that in the past.
That's very helpful. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other further questions before we adjourn?
No, just want to make a motion to approve.
Oh, I'm sorry. That was the whole discussion.
I'll second the motion by Councilman Cahoon.
So, we have a motion? We have a motion from Councilman Cahoon, seconded by Councilwoman Souza. Roll call vote, please, Madam Clinton.
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Morado.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
Council President Britta.
Aye.
The President, I move adjournment.
Second that.
Roll call vote, please.
Okay. It's like we were just here to do this. Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Morado.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
Councilman Britta.
Aye.
Council President Britta.
Aye.[1736.88]